Hello, my name is Nick Campion. I'm running for city council District Seven. Really appreciate you guys being here tonight. Speaking in front of you today is kind of surreal for me because I grew up with a learning and speaking disability. I took forever on tests and I mumbled a ton. However, I worked hard as a kid, working on my learning and my speaking. I was given the resources I need and I had someone in my corner helping me out. Because of the support I had, I was able to graduate from high school, undergrad, graduate school with an MBA from CU Boulder. Let's go Bucks! Like, I became a military member of the Colorado Air National Guard where I worked on F-16 jets. And then I became a CEO for three software companies all at the same time. It's crazy. Outside of work, I like to serve others where I volunteer weekly, helping entrepreneurs beyond house and the planet. From life, I have learned the importance of providing services for others that are in need. Unfortunately, Denver is not in everybody's corner. Unfortunately, Denver... Oh, sorry. My brain is running really fast right now. Unfortunately, Denver is not in everybody's corner. And Denver's not helping everyone. For example, right now in Denver, it's expensive to find a house. Beyond house is increasing. And we're not getting our trash picked up every week. As a servant leader, I am passionate about serving others, the community, and the planet. And I'm running for Denver City Council District Seven because I want to make Denver work for everyone and I want to keep District Seven moving forward. Using my experience as a problem solver and a business leader, I will work with residents to come up with solutions, build key relationships, and come up with equitable solutions to keep District Seven and Denver moving forward. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Thanks for having me so much tonight. My name is Adam Estrop. I'm also a candidate for the Denver City Council in District Seven. I live in the Baker neighborhood with my wife, who was a Denver public school teacher until we had our baby five months ago. I'm a lifelong Democrat. The party's given me a lot, from my first time volunteering for John Kerry in Youngstown, Ohio, to working for now Congresswoman Brittany Pedersen when she first ran for the State House, passing gun violence and gun safety laws at the state legislature, civil unions, and working to make our state a progressive place where everyone can feel welcome. I thought I would kind of get out of politics, to be perfectly honest, and live a normal life, but the housing crisis pulled me back in. We've seen our community lose affordability over the last several decades. The house I was born in was $50,000 when my mom bought it. It's $1.6 million today with nothing but a fresh coat of paint. This is not an accident. It's not just due to corporate greed or inflation. It's due to bad policy that we've had in our communities over the last several decades. I've been working to change that over the last five years as the leader of a grassroots group called Yippee Denver, just in my backyard Denver. We've been working to make our neighborhoods places where affordable starter homes can be built again. Most of our neighborhoods don't have any subsidized housing in them for teachers and folks who need support. We can add subsidized housing to our neighborhoods by changing these land use codes. And we can actually hit our climate goals, not just make plans and, you know, nice fluffing speeches, but actually change our land use and transportation system to reduce emissions and build a more resilient community. I've been making policy change. If you remember the group living fight from 2021, I helped lead the coalition that stopped the dark money that was trying to overturn that proposal. And we actually have a housing committee at our state legislature now as a direct result of the work that Yippee Denver and myself have done. That's going to help get affordable housing into our communities. So I'd love your support to get on city council and continue advocating for neighborhoods that, you know, can be inclusive for folks starting out, folks who want to age in place, and folks of every income. So thank you so much for having me tonight.
Hello, thank you so much for having all of us here tonight. It's great to be here with you and to be amongst all these really exceptional candidates up here. My name is Guy Padjet. I'm running for Denver City Council District Seven. Back in my twenties, when I was living up in Casper, Wyoming, I was elected to the city council, making me the first openly gay elected official in Wyoming's history, just five years after my friend and classmate Matt Shepard was killed in a notorious San Diego hate crime. Later, I served as the mayor of Casper. I tried to use my time there wisely. I worked on projects to try and lift people up from establishing public transit system to working on affordable housing, to establishing an urban renewal district, which is going strong to this day. I'm very proud of the work I was able to do up there. I'm running for the Denver City Council because I believe we're at a real crossroads right now. The decisions we make right now are going to affect our city for decades to come. While we've seen tremendous growth over the last 10, 15 years, and it's been very exciting, but while we've seen this growth, we've seen the city fall behind on basic, essential city services, public safety, public transit, housing affordability, homelessness. These are things that are essential services that cities are duty-bound to provide to their residents. And we've fallen far behind. I want to see us catch up. And it's not that I don't believe that we shouldn't be investing in socioeconomic justice, environmental sustainability, our arts and our culture. We absolutely need to be investing in that, continuing to invest on that. But if you can't get to the art museum, if you're afraid to go to the art museum, or if you just straight up can't afford to go to the art museum because you spent every last penny on rent, then it doesn't really matter that we have an art museum. That's my basic message. And that is why I want to run and be your representative for city council in Denver. I'd love it if you wouldn't check out my website, www.guyfordenver.com, and help me build a Braver, Safe for Denver. Thank you.
This is so exciting. We're talking about the future of Denver and the future of HD2. Thank you for having me. This is not the path that I ever imagined for myself, but one that I am so proud and excited to take. I spent most of my life running my family's business. And I had one goal, which was so that one day my parents wouldn't have to work so hard. And when I dedicate myself to something, I am relentless. I spent most of my... Oh, sorry. My name is Clara Liedres and I'm running to serve Lucky District Seven on Denver City Council. I'm running because we need a leader, a leader who can unite people, deliver collaborative results and solutions to the issues facing not just our district, but our growing city. District Seven is currently served by Councilwoman Jolynn Clark, and he is not seeking reelection. When elected, I will bring a collaborative, inclusive, fiscally, and environmentally responsible, common sense approach to the issues that are facing our district. My experience includes running a construction company, managing a staff of over 50 people, managing millions of dollars worth of public projects, and building my own home. I know the value of hard work and seeing a project through till the end. I have also dedicated the past year to the Denver's Advancing Equity and Rezoning Task Force for the city and have sat on the board of the Latino Cultural Arts Center. I have also sat on the board of one of the most successful nonprofits Habitat for Humanity. I am a survivor. I'm a survivor of gentrification and adversity and dozens of reasons why someone like me isn't easily here in front of you today. This election will determine the future of generation for decades to come. And my vision is that together we can create a thriving District Seven where these things are true for every resident, that they may be able to breathe clean air, feel safe, walk and bike around the district, and have access to transit and public parks, but most importantly, so that every Denverite will have a place to call home. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Paul Cashman. I'm in my second term representing District Six on Denver City Council. You are sitting here in the midst of Denver's District Six. Running for my third term, I'm unopposed on the ballot. The main reason I look forward to a third term is if we're all reelected, Councilwoman Flynn, myself, and Councilwoman Gilmore will be the remainders of the Class of Fifteen. We'll have a minimum of five new council members. We will have a new mayor. We'll probably have a bunch of new department heads. And I hope to provide a little bit of consistency and kind of corporate knowledge in the coming years. I've worked very actively in my time on council to enable residents to play a role in their own governance. The first thing I did coming on council was to foster a rule change that, for the first time in council's history, provided a 30-minute public comment session before our Monday night meetings. Working now to try to get an Office of Community Empowerment stood up, which through 15 minutes of Googling, you'll find we're about the only city you can find that doesn't do that. What that office does is it works every day with our neighborhood groups and our nonprofits and individual residents to help them empower in their own governance. I will throw a few things out to you that I heard the other day that kind of point out what we need to be working on. Past couple of years during the pandemic, 67% of Denver's childcare centers went out of business and have not reopened. Two-thirds have not reopened, okay? Our after-school programs are disappearing. 20%, and this is kind of stunning, 20% statewide, 20% of all new mothers, first-time moms, die by drug overdose or suicide in the first year. We need to... Everybody knows we need to get crime down. You can't police or arrest your way out of crime. You can get bad guys off the street. You get lucky, you may stop a few crimes. We need to address public safety from a public health perspective and cut off the flow of people who find that criminal behavior is their only way to get their needs met. We need to build up mental health, drug treatment, job training, and we need to take care of our kids and our families. Thank you.
It's amazing how fast people can talk if you give them two minutes. My name is Mike Hughes. I am a candidate for City Council District Five. And it's a pleasure to be here and thank you for your time and for your dedication to your community and for wanting to come to a forum like this to hear how fast we can talk in two minutes. So I started my own business just a little over 10 years ago. And it's really nice to hear that profession being touted so openly tonight from many of the candidates. I'm a professional media. I have had a long career before opening my own business, about 30 years of public policy consensus building and conflict resolution. I've worked for the Centers for Disease Control and EPA as clients, Bureau of Land Management, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, but also locally. And have testified in front of Councilman Cashman and the rest of the city council as the task forces that I've helped have brought consensus-driven solutions to some of the messes that are inside the Denver zoning code. Slap Home Task Course, the Rapid Square Zoning Task Course, and more. So I am looking to, as many of the candidates are, bring that consensus mindset to the work with the new mayor and the new council. The difference is I have 30 years of professional experience doing it. The last thing I want to say is when you own a business for 10 years, you get a lot of phone calls. I get people who want to lend me money and I'll rate us interest rates. Every day I get five or six calls. We want to lend you money for your business. I got a call yesterday from a personal trainer who wanted to have me sign up for personal training sessions. And my answer was, I don't need a personal trainer. I'm knocking on as many doors as I can in District Five. And I've had a great week. I have been knocking on the doors in 204 and 205 and meeting community members. For me, the key to this position on city council is to be of service, is to do that deep community engagement, find out what people really need and what they're concerned about, and then work with the new mayor and the new council to find answers that work for all of us. So I, again, thank you for your time. And it's Mike Hughes, HughesforDenver.com. I've got some cards back on the back, the ones that look like Colorado license plates, and would love to have your vote for Council District Five. Thanks.
Good evening. Thank you for having us this evening. I'm so happy to be here. My name is Tony Pickford. I'm running to be the next city councilperson to represent southeast Denver in District Four. I'm a fourth-generation Denberite, a third-generation product of Denver Public Schools, and I come from a long line of educators, entrepreneurs, and social justice champions. On both sides of my family, they came here in the late 1800s. So me and my family have been working to make Denver a better place for over, I guess, 120 years now. I was raised in southeast Denver. I attended Thomas Jefferson High School. I was also able to go back there and coach high school basketball for four years, which was really rewarding. I'm married to a 16-year DPS teacher who doesn't teach too far from here at Steel Elementary, Robin. And we have a one-year-old son that we're raising in the house that she grew up in. We were fortunate enough to buy that house for my in-laws after they had lived there for 39 years. Professionally, I spent the first part of my career in the for-profit sector. I was involved in some small business startups. And the work I was most proud of was when I was working in the software sector, where our job was to process workers' comp claims for federal employees. The largest group of federal employees that we were able to help was United States postal workers. And so that was really, really rewarding. The second half of my career, I've spent in education and youth leadership development. I've been a student voice in leadership in Denver, a student voice and leadership coordinator in Denver Public Schools. And I was the founding dean of students at an all-boys public school in DPS. I've been extremely involved in Denver politics, mostly through passing three successful citizen-led ballot initiatives. In 2018, it was Let Denver Vote. In 2019, it was Democracy for the People. And in 2021, it was Yes for Parks and Open Space. Very, very happy that all three of those ballot initiatives won every single precinct in District Four. Denver, as you know, is an inflection point, and we need bold leaders that will co-govern with the community so that we are all working together to make Denver a more vibrant, just, sustainable place. Please visit PickfordForDenver.com to learn more about our campaign and plug in and get involved. And I would love to earn your support and vote, and I look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Diana Romero Campbell, and I'm running for... Here, I'm saying, where are we at? I'm running for District Four and for city council here in southeast Denver. And I say "here" in southeast Denver because we are a part of the city that I think often gets overlooked and not seen. So, a little bit about myself. I grew up across from Bible Park. It's the house that my mom still lives in today. And growing up and seeing that neighborhood change and evolve over years has been tremendous. I'm a graduate of Thomas Jefferson High School. I went to Hamilton, I was bused to Whiteman. But I've spent my time really within our community. One of the things that I want to share with you is I'm the daughter of two public school teachers. And that was tremendous because with very little, we did a lot. We really integrated our neighborhood. Southeast Denver looked very different back then. One of the things that I am very proud of is that I was able to... My husband and I were able to purchase a house, and I live in Hampton Heights. We were able to raise our family there. I have two DPS graduate students, and I also look at DCIS. And it just sent them on a trajectory, my daughter on a trajectory for her education, and my son also from TJ. But I've spent my career in the nonprofit field, early on, providing service to families. I voted in House District Nine since I was 18 years old. There was one election I missed when I was in the Peace Corps. But working with and advocating for and beside women, children, youth, and families my entire career, from the Colorado Children's Campaign, to working at Mile High United Way, to running a Montessori Early Care and Education Center, and currently as the executive director of a nonprofit organization, these experiences have really grounded me in not only seeing how we serve our community, but how we're serving families. And it is tremendous as far as what has happened over the last couple of years, especially since, you know, the last three years of COVID. Families need support. There is high mobility because there isn't stability. And I believe that I bring a voice that is not only about what the issues are, but how we do it. It's bringing community together. It's listening to one another. It's collaborating and finding common ground. And I believe that this is the type of leadership that we need in southeast Denver to move our community forward. Again, my name is Diana Romero Campbell. I will put some... I forgot to put my material up front, but it's DianaForDenver.com. Thank you. What great introductions from everyone. So I think I'm going to ask one or two questions. It takes a while to go through a question, but then we will probably go into the folks to save some of the time we have. So, my first question, and I did tell everyone this was coming, is about affordable housing for middle-class folks. And so I'll just say that I'm a renter, and whenever my friends want to buy a house, they say, "I love Denver, but I can't afford it." And so they all leave. And so they don't feel like Denver's the right place for their family to grow a family, to live, to be a little own-a-home cadaverate. And that makes me so scared for the city because we need to be a place where middle-class people can live and be comfortable and have good lives here. So, all these fresh faces are so exciting and old faces. And I'd love to hear your thoughts on how you could support middle-class housing in the city.
How much time do we have?
Two minutes. Two minutes. For each person? Oh, did I say a minute? I think I emailed a minute. Just kidding, a minute. One minute. Very sorry. Yeah. Okay. So, affordable housing for middle-class families. You know, running through southeast Denver, we have four rail stations, and there's a tremendous opportunity there. I believe that there are opportunities for us to really think about what is affordable housing like? How do we develop those areas? And how do we grow southeast Denver? I don't want southeast Denver to be left out of the conversation. And I believe that we are part of building more affordable housing. It shouldn't just be in other districts. It should also be right here in District Four. So I'm a firm supporter of that. We have different areas that we can... That was fast. Okay, thank you. Does that mean done or does that mean 30 seconds?
If you only get one minute, the one hand is halfway through and also 30 seconds. Same one. I'm going to give you 25 more seconds.
You know, I know when to stop talking, so I'm going to pass it on.
Y'all have one minute. Hand out this halfway over 30 seconds.
I thought that was like two minutes.
Great question. Thank you. I think the starting point for me is really looking to see how we get folks from being renters to being homeowners. So a big start for me is tenant protections and being sure that our renters... I have St. Louis Housing. In District Four, 53% of the folks are renters, and one out of two of those folks are cost-burdened by their rent, which means they're paying more than 30% of their income towards rent. So how we really focus on getting people from being renters into purchasers is very important. We have to work with the planning department because we've been building the wrong product for the wrong market. We've got lots of luxury vacant apartments that are open. We've got a lot of high-end homes that... That missing middle, you know? I come from a background of education. It's very, very hard for teachers or nurses to buy homes. So I think that's the starting point for me, is being sure that people who are renters are stabilized and that we're working with them to get them into homes and that we're working with the planning department to actually build the right product for the needs of our city. Thank you.
I'm going to say right here, just past the mic. That's okay. Well, I think we'll go faster. So again, Mike Hughes, Council District Five. I want to focus on, in answering that question, on the... Not on affordable housing that is tax-supported affordable housing with organizations like Denver Housing Authority and Metro West Housing, but market-rate housing that people can actually afford. And that requires that we balance supply and demand. And so I think we need a significant regulatory reform inside community planning and development to move that giant stack of pending approvals through the system so that we can get houses built, condos built, apartments built in the places where we can serve them with transportation. So I'm talking in my district about Colorado Boulevard and Leedsdale and places where we can double or triple the number of 83 buses working with our TD or the 40 on Colorado and meaningfully build housing that we can serve with transportation and rebalance supply and demand on the private side.
Okay. Yeah, we need to obviously increase the supply of affordable housing for all area median income levels. And we need to make sure we keep increasing our minimum wage towards living wage so more people can access housing at any level. I believe we need to look at broadening the availability of accessory dwelling units throughout the city as one way to increase our housing stock. We're working on a plan now for the near-southeast neighborhoods from Colorado to Quebec and Leedsdale to Yale. And we're looking at, is it possible to begin instilling duplex development into some of our traditional single-unit neighborhoods without changing the historic quality of those neighborhoods? So it's a multifaceted deal, but it's building and making sure people have the dough that they can actually afford a mortgage or a rent payment. And I agree with Tony that for sale units for lower income levels is critical to building wealth.
Hello, everyone again. So I think there's really three things that will really help with the middle-income housing. And one thing to know is that there's statutory affordable housing, which is through the city ordinance, and then there is naturally occurring affordable housing. In order to create more naturally occurring affordable housing, that's going to come down to zoning and making different types of housing available to people. And I agree that we need more than just one- and two-bedroom apartments and homes if we want to have people with children be able to stay in the city. The other thing is building. We need to be able to build. I personally built my home, and it took me... I started planning when I was pregnant, and when my son was six years old, he had his bedroom. So that tells you how our permitting process is going and my personal experience there. And then the last thing I will say is the AMI. So when you talk about that affordable housing, it's very untangible, especially as interest rates rise because in order to qualify for that, there's the area median income, which has to do... You have to make a low enough area median income in order to qualify to get into that housing. And then if you make... You have to make enough to actually qualify for the loan. So it's a caveat, and that margin is becoming tighter with rising interest rates. Thank you.
Thank you for that really important question. I think it's one of the essential issues we'll be facing in the years to come in Denver. I do not want to see our city become another San Francisco where only the very wealthy can afford to live in the center of our city. I think there are several things, some of which my compatriots up here have mentioned, but I'll go ahead and repeat some of them. First of all, we can't have housing if we're not building housing. We need to put resources into our permitting department in order to get through the backlog that is currently piled up. Secondly, I'd like to see us take a look over the coming years at our inclusionary housing organs. Let's see if we have the percentages right in there. Let's see if we have the right incentives in there to get developers to build market-rate housing. Third of all, let's talk about ADUs. They absolutely should be more accessible across the city. It's not a panacea. It won't solve the problem, but it will help provide another option for people. Lastly, I just want to bring up appropriate density in appropriate areas. We've heard people talk a little bit about transit-oriented development already. I think this is still a field that we have not tapped its whole potential. Putting dense housing in places where there's transit and there's already infrastructure that can support more density will be key to building more affordable housing for the middle class in Denver. Thank you so much.
I'm going to come out a little short here. We've had a lot of politicians over the last several decades with a lot of nice words about housing, but nothing has come of it. In 80% of Denver, all you can build is a larger mansion. In most of the remaining part of the city, only large Wall Street-backed developers can build giant apartment buildings. That's what's permitted in our city. If you aren't interested in changing that, you're not interested in adding more middle-class housing because it's prohibited in our neighborhoods today. And I would just say, I live in a half-duplex. Do you really believe that my home is so disruptive and dangerous to a neighborhood that it should be prohibited away from detached, single-family homes? Is a detached, single-family home really that different of a structure that a fourplex or a triplex will corrode your quality of life? These are the questions we need to ask because as lots have become so expensive, if we want to have affordable homes, not tax-supported, but, you know, less expensive homes, we need to subsidize that land cost. The lot my 750-square-foot half-duplex is on is over $300,000 for just the land. It is very difficult to build affordable housing if you can only build one structure on a lot. And so that means, you know, a full lot is going to be $600,000, $700,000. This change is critical. It will support our inclusionary zoning and other policies. You can't make X percent of a single-family home affordable. You can make a fourplex affordable. Thank you very much.
Nick Campion, you guys take all my answers. So I have three different... Three ideas that are very similar. that are very similar. One is zoning reform. We need to allow more duplexes, triplexes, ADUs as well to be built. We also need to work on more dense housing sourced by public transportation. By middle-class want to use public transportation, so we need to build by our trains and bus routes as well. And then, also, I've been talking to a lot of people that are building and how long it takes to get things done. The permitting process is slow. When that's slow, the costs increase, makes things more expensive. So, we really need to analyze what's taking so long. Do we need to hire more? Do we need to change our systems to make them more efficient so we can build faster and address this issue? Because it is a supply-demand issue. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. So, I gave them that question, but I gave them no other question. So, this will get interesting. I think we're going to change gears quite a bit here, and I wanted to ask a question about climate change. And so, I wanted to ask, what do you view as the role of the city councilperson in preventing climate change? And what type of climate initiatives would you work on? And we're gonna go this way.
So, climate change's overall goal is just to reduce our emissions. And the city already has the Climate Action Eighty-Fifty Plan, which lays out what we need to do as a city. And we just need to follow that rule. We need to energize Denver. It's done a great job of working with buildings and reducing our energy uses in our buildings, because that's a good source of emissions as well. As a city council rep, my goal is to really work with our neighborhoods and do a lot more education to residents in terms of food waste. Food waste is one of the easiest things we can do as residents is to reduce our emissions and also just educating them on other ways to reduce mission... Sorry, to reduce our energy in their house, such as solar panels and heat pumps. But there's a lot we can do as city council to have an effect towards climate change.
It's exciting to not talk about housing for once. So, there are a lot of other issues facing our city other than just housing. Climate change is a really major issue. On city council, you know, I get to talk about cool policy while we're running, but if elected, it's really an implementative, you know, down-in-the-dirt job. I have a lot of control on city council over the buildings we build and how we get between them. And those are two of the largest sources of emissions in Colorado. Transforming our transportation so you can get around safely without a bike is gonna be critical for reducing our emissions and ensuring that we have, you know, a top-of-the-line building code so that we're not wasting construction materials and that we're reducing our emissions that way is also gonna be really important. I had friends who lost their homes in the Marshall Fire. Denver has the lowest average wind speed of a metro-area county. We need to think about what our responsibility is as our, you know, surrounding metro area becomes less safe and habitable. This is a place people can come and live. So, I think solving climate change and reducing our emissions is critical in Denver and building a resilient city.
I believe that Denver has the opportunity before itself to become the shining example of environmental sustainability in the Rocky Mountain West and in the country. But we need the willpower to invest in policies that will bring us to that point. One of the things that I believe has an outsized effect on environmental sustainability is public transit. And we are failing at that right now. Public transit has the potential to reduce greenhouse emissions, to improve public health, to help people get around the city to their jobs. This is an area that we need to improve on. But going further than that, we've heard talk about codes. We need to make sure that we have, as Adam said, top-of-the-line billing codes that ensure that new buildings, commercial and residential, go in with environmental sustainability in mind. I'm encouraged by the talk about phasing out gas stoves in Denver's living toilet paper. I think that's great. I'm encouraged by the heat pump program. We need to continue that. I'm encouraged by the e-bike subsidy. These are all things that we need to continue on doing to work to create a sustainable Denver for years to come. Thank you.
There is nothing that makes you care about climate change like looking into your seven-year-old's eyes and having to explain to him that it's not safe to go play outside because our air quality is so terrible. I'm extremely committed to figuring out ways, including public transit, but another thing that is underrated is trees. Our tree canopy is terrible, and it's disproportionately affecting disadvantaged neighborhoods. Another part of that is, for example, going back to the CASSER funds, which, yes, it's great to give heat pumps and e-bikes, but those are for a very specific demographic of people. How about providing insulation in windows to an old woman who's lived in her house for twenty years and can't afford to do that? So, I would like to look at more equitable ways to really look at how disadvantaged neighborhoods are being targeted and suffering at a greater rate than other areas. Thank you.
When I was running for office in 2015, and people would say, "What's your top issue?" I said, "Well, the top two issues are climate, addressing climate change and getting dirty money out of politics." We're working on both. I was able to get a statement, I think it's on page fourteen of Blueprint Denver, that basically says, "As we consider any rezonings, we need to, as our top guidance, look at how they affect the environment." We also, I worked hand-in-hand with Joel Clark to create the Office of Climate Action Sustainability Resilience. You know, it started off as a part of our Department of Public Health and Environment. We got it broken away, and it's well-staffed and doing some very good work. I've been working on, when I came on the city council, nothing had been done on our sidewalks since they were installed a hundred and so many years ago. We'd get fifteen complaints a year where we've got thirty-two-hundred miles of sidewalk. There's a whole lot to do with electrification and other things. It's a long, long haul we've got, but we're moving forward.
You know, if I say, everything's been said, but not everyone has said. So, I'm gonna not repeat some of what you've heard, but yes, transportation and buildings. That's where those emissions come from. And so, transportation and buildings, top of the list. But I'd also like to do things that just encourage people to do the right thing. And so, I want people to come and see my front yard. I do not own a lawnmower. The reason that I do not own a lawnmower is I do not have lawn. I have a beautiful front yard, and it takes very little water. So, in addition to transportation and buildings, we need to be thinking about water conservation. And so, come see my front yard. No grass.
Thank you for bringing that up. Like, the water crisis is very, very important. A few things that I think we can do. We've talked about a citywide pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure network. That's a huge way that we can reduce emissions. We need to make all of our city buildings more efficient and climate-resilient. We can just retrofit those, and that seems pretty straightforward. We need to streamline the process and put more incentives for people to install solar and heat pumps. All of our city vehicles should be electric. We need to electrify the whole fleet by the way. And I think we need to be really, really thoughtful about what we do with our land use. I think with climate change on all of our doorsteps, any forward-thinking city develops open green space as a last resort, not the first. So, we need to develop those already hardscape services that have infrastructure. We need to leave our open and green spaces open because the trees are the lungs of our city. And as you all know, climate change is extremely important. So, those are some ideas that I have that I would like to implement with my colleagues on city council if elected. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I think a lot has been said. Part of what I think we also need to be able to do, and I appreciate the, you know, the Climate Action Sustainability work that has been happening. And there are a lot of initiatives in the city. It's also about capacity. So, as a role of a city council member is to make sure that we have the capacity to be able to implement and execute these great ideas. That is critical. And we got to be able to work together to make that happen. I will tell you, the recycling and the composting, it was something that our family decided to do when my kids were little. And I wasn't necessarily a believer of compost, or I was gonna say, "No, it wasn't all whatever," but we got it. And my kids grew up with composting. And it was something that they, it changed how they think about it. It changed how they interact and how they make a personal choice every day as to their impact on climate. I think as a city council, it is definitely about working with our colleagues on council, like, working with people within the city. But we cannot forget our young people. And I believe that engaging them in the conversation and engaging them as to what they can do and what they would like to see in their city is critical. I appreciate Councilman Cashman, what you said earlier about out-of-school-time programs. Thank you for the work that you've done, because our young people are gems. And we know that we have ideas, but they're brilliant.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, so, we could do more questions. It just slipped in my head. But I think it would be a better idea to open some questions up to the audience. So, all right, over here. I'm gonna start here.
Hello, I work, I live in council District Seven. I'm involved in a lot of energy and environment stuff at both at the city and at the state level. But I'm also a worker at the convention center in the Denver Performing Arts Complex. And excuse the vernacular, but downtown has become a shithole, you know, for a variety of reasons. But like, when Chili's and McDonald's on the mall are closing, and it's not because of lack of profit, we have, and you know, the potential of like, the stadiums moving out towards the airport, you know, the Broncos, the Avs, and Nuggets. You know, all these programs sound great, but we have to have a way to pay for them. And Denver's downtown economy used to be strained by having retail, commercial, residential, sports, arts. And now, some of that's starting to go away. So, I'm really curious what your guys' plans are, thoughts are of trying to revitalize downtown and make that our breadwinner again.
Thank you for that question. I agree. I think, you know, growing up, downtown was where we would go to celebrate birthdays and special occasions, and it was a really exciting place to go. And it really isn't anymore. I think we need to focus on how we get people downtown. I think that making sure public transit is a key part of that, right? And also, being able to activate spaces that are empty. We have tons of empty office space. So, being able to convert that into livable space, places for services, and have a reason to come downtown is extremely important.
Yeah, great question. And I grew the floor that public transit is going to be absolutely central to any sort of revitalization downtown. Making sure that we're not just serving those people who want to come in from Littleton, but we're serving people who want to come there from Baker. Adaptive reuse is also going to be absolutely essential to any efforts to revitalize downtown. Healthy cities have healthy cores. But cities with healthy cores have people who live in them. Now, we've done a great job increasing the amount of people who live downtown, but there's a long way to go yet. And I think one of the keys is going to be finding out a way to make adaptive reuses not only affordable, but practical for developers and for the people who want to live there. Just one more thing. I think continuing to find ways to build in those empty parking lots as well, whether they're city properties or private-owned properties, finding incentives to develop those properties into, not just necessarily residential spaces, but also commercial entertainment spaces, the kind of things that used to attract us all to come downtown and that are lacking now. Thank you.
So, I ride public transit pretty regularly. And over the last two years, there's definitely been a huge increase in the amount of public drug use. I think that's probably one of the big things that's detracting from downtown. When I was speaking to restaurant owners, they said that they were having a hard time keeping workers, in part because finding somebody dead from an overdose in your bathroom is really dramatic. It's important to understand that drugs have changed in the last two years. Heroin is gone. It's been replaced by a rotating carousel of synthetic opioids. And even the people buying the drugs don't know what they're getting. We need to set up ways to get public drug use out of public spaces and off of transit. I support expanding the Work of Harm Reduction Action Center and following through on the legalization of safe-use sites that Denver passed in 2011. These have been effective all over the world in getting drug use out of public transit and out of business districts, and quickly cutting overdose deaths. We can't have hundreds of people dying on our streets, and somebody who's dead can't enter recovery. So, I think this is a critical, short-term step to couple with our long-term plans of housing and treatment.
For me, the two issues I want to focus on is safety in unhoused. We have a shortage of police officers right now. We're down about ten percent. So, I would really want to work with the Denver Police Department, bring our workforce up to a hundred percent, create incentives to get more cops, also create a better work culture as well to keep cops staying around longer. And also, the unhoused. Every Sunday, I volunteer for a group called Hip-Hairs Protectors, where we service unhoused camps. We provide water and trash services for them. And we really need to focus on downtown and get these people the services and housing they need so people can walk around downtown and feel safe. And those are the two issues I would address.
We need to, obviously, with people working at home now, the office buildings are more empty than they were. Retail is going largely online. We need to, as was mentioned, we definitely need to clean up downtown and make it a place again where people feel safe. We need to repurpose our office buildings more for residential. I'd like to see the Sixteenth Street Mall in downtown and surrounds it, and maybe create a series of individual districts, a restaurant district, an entertainment district, an arts district. Make room and incentives for local businesses to set up shop until, you know, the larger firms feel comfortable again coming. But I'd like to see our local businesses represented well in our downtown.
Yeah, I agree that the conversion of the empty office buildings, those that have just slid down the scale, would be a huge step forward. So, more housing in downtown. I had someone complaining about congestion as I was knocking on his door and talking about the issues that are important to him in the campaign. And I said, "You know, I'd rather have someone live downtown and walk to the theater than drive from Douglas County to the theater." So, let's really create incentives for those office buildings we reused downtown. I wish I had a magic wand and the Sixteenth Street Mall project could be over in a day instead of the years that it will take. But I think those kinds of investments matter, and they will take time. But I think the city investing in downtown and continuing to encourage people to come downtown matters a great deal. And part of that is city staff. And so, while it is important to fill those vacant jobs, and some of that is letting people work from home because that's what they choose, it is also important to build up that sense of civic obligation among the city staff and ask them to return to downtown so that those restaurants can survive, so that downtown can thrive again.
Gosh, it's really hard to go last.
I know.
The adaptive reuse of commercial space is extremely important. I had some meetings with the downtown Denver Partnership, and that's something that they're looking to do. It is expensive, but we can incentivize that at a city level. We need more free events downtown, especially with the economy the way it is. We need to just have free, fun, family events. And this might sound a little bit simple, but we live in a very polarizing, fear-mongering environment. Let's go downtown. Let's not think that downtown is a scary place that we all shouldn't go. I think that there are some elements that are definitely seedy. But let's not live in fear. Let's connect as humans. And let's go down in groups. Let's connect as humans, and let's go down in groups. I imagine if everybody here was downtown right now, we'd be having a great time. And I think there's some people there that would be a little bit uncomfortable with groups like us who weren't having open drug use or particular crimes. And so I encourage us just to believe in the power of human connectivity and don't be buying into the fear-mongering.
I think one of the things that you've heard from everybody is it's not a one-shot deal. It's complex. And it's gonna take multiple strategies, and it's gonna take multiple levers being moved and changed to be able to make that happen. What I would add to this conversation, because I believe, you know, there's truth to everybody and everything that's been said. What I would add to it is that we also really need to address those who are unhoused and homelessness. And again, it's complex, and it's nuanced, and it's something that we should really think about as far as like the various strategies that are needed for those who are unhoused. We need supportive housing. We need, we have a ton of homeless individuals who are couch-surfing and living in cars, and that's a different strategy. And I really think that you see it most visibly downtown, but we also see it in all of our neighborhoods here. But it is a complex issue, and it's not just one strategy. Thank you.
I was gonna say that I think that might need to be the last question, but it's going to be another.
I was gonna ask a rapid-fire question.
Go for it.
I mean, first, okay. I did want, I know we have two more candidates who haven't spoken yet to hear from. And I did want to thank everybody who has spoken and who will speak tonight for being a fair elections candidate. Thank you. I think in just, you know, five seconds or something, if each of you could go through the most important thing, not go through, but mention the most important thing we haven't mentioned tonight so far.
Youth suicide rates are out of control.
You know, I've been, I did watch, and I'm sorry, the long conversation about art hill and have heard a great deal about it. We haven't talked a lot about open space and parks and all manner of parks. Dog parks and little pocket parks and playgrounds. And so I think our access to green space and the use of open space, I think is something we have to continue to keep at the forefront, and that hasn't mentioned much today.
Government accountability and transparency.
Everyone is here because you're engaged and involved. This is an important election, and it's talking to your neighbors, it's talking to others, and it's getting more people outside of this room to vote.
I think one thing that we haven't talked about enough in general is that what is causing all of these problems is our quality of life. And going back to what Councilman Cashman said, is if youth suicide is a huge issue, people are not seeing a future in Denver. So we need to talk about how do we create that quality of life where people see a future here in Denver.
Public safety. Representative inclusive public safety for the entire city and everyone who lives there.
I mean, I think there's always more we can talk about, but I'll just give a pitch to our libraries and all of the ways that they're continuing to serve our community.
Sweet, no one took my answer. You didn't say any of her rights.
That was a great last question, and let's give another really big answer. Please don't lose yet. We actually have a few more candidates. But first, I wanted to do a money catch.